Good evening. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle, April 1st, 2019. Is this secretary?
Uh, Avizado, right here.
Yes, please come up.
Good evening.
May I speak? Please.
My name is Shaheen Heshman. I'm the project manager on 242 Croton Avenue.
Sorry, just one second.
I just have to turn that on.
If you could just start over, please.
Good evening. My name is Shaheen Heshman. I'm the project manager for 242 Croton Avenue. We're making a rear addition on family room and a dining area and a powder room. And a wood deck. Existing house is lacking in family room and dining area and is also lacking in powder room. The reason we're asking for a variance is that the existing house is existing nonconforming. All we're doing, we're going alongside the left side of the house, straight to back of the house. The property's two acres and the left neighbor is, if I show you the picture. The left neighbor is on iron elevation with a retaining wall and a fence.
The retaining wall is on this property, the applicant's property?
It's right there. You could see it, right?
Yes, but it belongs to...
I don't know who it belongs to. I think the left neighbor it belongs to. So, it's not, the new addition is not visible from the left neighbor. And also, there is no alternative that we could put this addition under...
I'm sorry, just for my benefit. Are we looking over the fence at the applicant or we're looking over the fence at the neighbor?
At the neighbor.
The neighbor, okay.
We're looking from the applicant wood deck to the neighbor's house.
Could you tell us about the rest of what you've taken photos of?
This is the front of the house. This is front looking across the street. This is the left side. This is the right side of the house. Rear of the house. This is the right side of the house. This is the photo I showed you before. This is looking at the right side. This is the left house. This is the right house, neighbor.
What is the fenced-in area?
What is, excuse me?
The fenced-in area there? What is that, on top right there?
This one?
Yeah.
It's just for some gardening and all that.
Not that it affects the variance at all, but you notice that you're building the whole thing on piers? There's no foundation?
Nope, there is a pier and a foundation, right.
Yeah, there's no underseller or anything like that?
No, no, it's crown space.
Oh, really? Okay.
Because the house is elevated, in order to make it level with the existing house, we have to come up.
Just that point of interest, not that it makes any difference with our deliberation. I just was, I saw that and I was wondering what the reasoning was.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Oh, it's another problem. This one is, there's a long narrow piece of property here.
Could you just help us with the variances that you require? So, for the front yard, you require 12 feet? Is that right?
Well, we're not doing anything to the front yard.
Okay. You help me then. What are the variances that you require?
On the left side.
On the left side. So, side yard?
Side yard, left side, variance.
And how much is that, that you require, the variance?
They require, it's on the paper. I don't remember from memory.
Okay, so what you've written down is, you've checked off front yard and side yard and you've recorded 12 feet, 5 feet, and 8 feet.
Because this is the wood deck. This is for the wood deck.
Which is for the wood deck, sir?
Can I?
Yeah, sure. Here, take a look.
Front is the, I believe is a 12 feet, 5 feet. I don't remember exactly. I can't tell you exactly, but...
Let me read to you from the building inspector's letter and you tell me if this is correct or not, okay?
Please.
This is what we're gonna go by.
Please do.
All right, the side yard required is 35, proposed is 23. That means you're asking for a variance of 12 feet.
Right.
And that's for the addition. In addition, for the addition, you need a front yard variance, required is 60, proposed 55. That means there's a 5-foot variance you need there.
Okay.
For the deck, the building inspector indicates that you need the following variances. A side yard, required is 35, proposed is 27. The variance would be 8.
Okay.
And, uh, that's it.
That's it, yeah. That's right.
Is that ten right?
Yes, it does.
And the deck is really replacing the old deck, right?
Yes, yes.
Not going any, out any further than the old deck?
Back?
Back.
No, it is going. We're adding an addition. Then the deck is behind that.
Okay, so it's a little bit more into the backyard, which I think is...
Yes, it is.
Has got hundreds and hundreds of feet behind it.
Exactly. It's a two-acre property in a one-acre zone.
And then the retaining wall you just showed us is actually in, isn't even at the property line, right?
Excuse me?
I said the retaining wall you just showed us is, does not appear to be at the property line.
That retaining wall is not.
No.
Yes. There is another retaining wall on the left side. Shall I show you the picture?
That was the other one?
Yes, yes.
All right, that doesn't appear on the survey.
Just to clarify, the front yard, you're not doing any work on the front of the house?
No, we're not.
But the front yard is because it's legally existing nonconforming.
Exactly.
It was built at 55 originally.
Exactly.
So, that's where the 5 feet comes in.
Right.
So, it's already there and you're not changing that?
We're not adding to the front.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
Yes.
Please come forward. You can identify yourself, please.
Good evening. Roger Herschore and I was at a 238 Croton Avenue and I am the property owner to, I think was referred to the left. I have concerns. I'm not objecting per se, but I...
We're here to hear your concerns, okay?
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that I'm not here objecting, but I do have concerns.
Okay, sure.
That I'd like to be heard. I'm concerned that the grant, I'm concerned with the granting of the variance, what it will do to me and my living and the value of my home. Like I said, I'm not necessarily opposed to the granting of the variance, but I'm wondering whether the applicant is proposing any kind of screening measures to mitigate what I perceive to be, I can get into that in a moment, what I perceive to be an adverse impact to me. The applicant said that the...
Could you, just on that point?
Sure, sure.
Could you just help us understand?
Yes.
You've heard him describe the work.
Yes, yep.
What is it that, of the work, you know, what is it that you feel will impact you?
So, yes, I will.
Sure.
So, the applicant said that the addition, there, the applicant's addition will not be visible to my house and that the fence screens it. That's, if I can look at the photos, that's just not true.
Can we see the photos again?
So, my driveway, so the fence is, I don't know what my fence is, 6 feet, I guess, 5 feet, 6 feet. If you're standing right up against the fence, correct, I will not see the house. If you take 5 steps back from the fence, you can see the house clearly. My property goes up as you get away from their house, so obviously as the elevation increases, it becomes more and more visible.
Can you point out on this survey, okay, where your property is in relation to, these are the improvements you're requesting?
Right, so my driveway comes in along, I'm here. My house is probably right about here, I guess.
Okay, and it's elevated?
And I go back, so...
And you're elevated, you're higher than they are?
Yeah, my driveway is probably...
Could you grab that mic and speak into it?
I'm sorry, sure.
Take it out. Just take the mic out and just speak into it.
A rapper.
Exactly, exactly.
My driveway, the finished elevation of my driveway is probably 5 or 6 feet or so higher than their grass. So, now the deck is elevated above that. I'm making this up. I don't really know. You have the plans, another 8 feet, so I see them. But again, I want to reiterate, I'm not necessarily, I just want you to understand and maybe there's some mitigating, mitigation that can occur with landscaping and trees and so forth. Once upon a time, when I first moved in in 2005, I think it was, the screening was great, but then hurricane, I think it was Irene came in and knocked down a bunch of, you know, knocked down a bunch of trees. So, the deck...
They have a deck there now, right?
Correct, so...
Has that proven to be in any way disturbing to your ability to enjoy your property at all, the existing deck?
Since the trees came down, yes, but that's not their fault and I don't begrudge them for that, but I think, as the applicant said, the deck is going further back along their property, therefore, you know, because as I look at the plans generally, as I understand them, the existing deck is basically gonna be enclosed, you know, maybe off a couple of feet. And then the new deck is gonna go beyond the addition. So, when the new deck goes, gets, goes further back onto their property, it's just getting closer to my house. So, that's, can I look at the, would you mind if I look at the photos for a moment?
Sure, sure. While you're doing that, Tom, are the sheds that are on the property, are they legal?
They're still working on that.
Okay, okay.
So, if I may?
Yes, sure. You just think about speaking into the microphone whenever you can.
I guess the best, the best picture...
So, I guess it's this middle, this middle one on the right was the one that, for instance, that's middle, kind of the middle?
The middle picture on the right, yeah.
So, does that represent, so your house is set back, right?
This is actually, if we could look at the two pictures together.
Sure.
So, you know, this piece of the house is obviously, is right here. My driveway comes like this.
Whose driveway is the one that's shown on that picture?
This? This is my driveway.
That's your driveway?
Yeah, so the fence is, is over here. So, my finger here is just on the other side of this fence here.
Right.
So, if I'm standing, and they're, so if I'm standing here, their existing deck is kind of over here, just for orientation purposes. So, you know, they don't see me, but I certainly do see them.
What kind of trees were there before the hurricane or the storm? Were they, were they evergreens that were...
They were, they were ever, I don't know what kind of trees they were. They were, they were evergreens and came down across my driveway and...
But you were sort of satisfied with, when those trees were present, you were sort of satisfied that the necessary screening existed between your property and the, your neighbors?
I was. One thing I would, I'd like to add about the trees that are no longer there is in the last, over the last two years, I, I don't know if the picture showed, I landscaped, re-landscaped my whole driveway, but the trees that were there were much taller. I don't know, 25, you know, 25, 30 feet. I don't know if this shows the landscaping on my property. I don't think it's...
Have a section of your property. This, this is one...
Yeah, but the...
Doesn't show this, though.
Yeah, the, I'm sorry. Landscaping's over here, so a thought I had is if they could put trees on their property, and for me, the closest, the closer the trees, you know, at a height that would block their deck, the closer the trees are to their deck, the better it would be for me, in terms of screening.
Right.
So, that's...
Okay.
Any questions? That's it?
We appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
So, you've heard what the applicant's neighbor has had to say.
Right.
My own conclusion is, we probably need for you to look at this again and see what you might be able to do to mitigate what the neighbor has brought up, from a screening standpoint.
Screenings with some planting, you know.
And then if you could come back to us next month with a plan that would show what your conclusions are, then we...
No, I think, I think there's a, there's a problem there because you have this retaining wall, which is, how did you say that retaining wall was, like 5 feet or something?
It's more than that. Just the retaining wall or with the fence?
Just the retaining wall.
Four, 5 feet.
Four, 5 feet. So, if you plant trees along that wall, you're already, you gotta plant 20-foot, 10, 15-foot trees. I don't think that's, I don't think that's gonna be a fair thing for the neighbor to do.
I think, no, I tend to agree with you. I think he's talking about the more you can bring the trees closer to the...
Well, that's over here. His house is here.
Yes, I'm sorry. Right, right. Over here, closer to the addition.
And I don't know how you can, every neighbor sees the other neighbor's house.
You know, I have a, I have a problem with this because the existing house is already there.
Right.
So, you're gonna block a 10-feet of deck, but the rest of the house is all visible? I don't think it's fair that the person is gonna have to do that. I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you. And the window that we put in the dining room was asked by ARB. It was an odd option. The window that we put there is open to the left neighbor. We had no window, ARB committee asked for it, so we put it in.
Harvey, what are your thoughts?
Well, I, I'm trying to separate what the neighbor has said from what is, what would be reasonable under the circumstances. Now, everyone has a desire that, you know, exactly what they want to see from their properties. But we live in communities where you don't have the ability to, you know, pick and choose everything you can see. If, if there were no variance required here, if the, and we're not talking about big variances, these are, what was the footage, footage is that?
12, 5, and 8.
Yeah.
Right.
So, these are, these are small amounts. And if they were moved so that there were no variance, it'd still be a deck there. It would be the same thing. And there would be no discussion about screening. So, I'm trying to, you know, see if there's something reasonable that could be done, but I think you've indicated that it would have to be putting in huge trees and it would be at a, at a location that's gonna interfere with the use of the applicant's property. So, materially, I think. So, I'm, I'm tending to feel the way Tony's feeling, that maybe, it may not be reasonable to, you know, try and shelter, you know, the, all screening here, but I'd be willing to see if there is something that the neighbor and the applicant could work out and then come back with before we made a final decision.
Can I show you?
Excuse me.
Yes.
Would you consider a screening on the deck itself that would benefit both parties?
No. I don't think that's fair either. I think if there's any planting to be done, it should be done on the neighbor's property because he's the high guy.
He's the one who doesn't wanna see.
And if the applicant, if the applicant and the neighbor get together and wanna share the expense of putting some screening along that fence, that, to me, would be a reasonable expenditure. Putting the, putting the money into a bunch of trees along the wall that's already 4 feet high is a waste of money and time. I don't see, I don't see the benefit of it. So, any screening that I would be in favor of would be if they were on the applicant's side and if the neighbor and the applicant could come together and say, we'll share the cost of these trees, maybe that could be a reasonable remedy for the situation. Other than that, I'm not voting for any screening. I don't think it's fair and I don't think it'll do any good.
Here's a Solomon-esque idea. Why don't you and the neighbor go outside and see if you can come to some conclusion, some compromise that you think, that you both think is fair? And if you can, we're gonna hear some other applications. If you can't, there's one thing that I did not point out, but because we only have three members this evening, it would require all three members voting in the affirmative for the application to be approved. And that also holds true for any of the other applications this evening. So, if you don't mind?
No, thank you so much.
I think that would...
Can you go back in after?
Be a good idea. Yes.
We'll see you both at the end.
Mary Scott, the architect. We have Mr. Hugahali and Ms. Naylin, the homeowners here tonight. We are here requesting, actually, four variances for the purpose of building a third garage bay with a office over it and then a master suite above. The variance we're asking for is significant, but we have kind of a tough site. Although the property is over an acre and large, we are between a rock and a hard place. If you look at the end of the driveway, it immediately has a steep slope. So, really, probably more than 2/3 of the property are a hill that's unbuildable. And then on the other side is the septic. So, the only place we really could add on was coming off the existing garage, which was the most efficient place as well, because it's the smallest impact on the coverage. And then we're utilizing the space over it and the space over that in order to effectively get what the client would like in the least imposing way. One thing I did want to point out, so just to show you, so this is the existing house. This is the proposal. Did go to ARB. They actually thought it was very nice. These are neighbors and although this is, you know, not a survey, you can see that a lot of the properties are nonconforming, close to what we're asking for. So, we don't feel that this is going to stand out in the neighborhood as an aberration and we feel the design is in keeping with the house.
So, the addition...
Right, so the...
What you're gonna be doing, is it gonna, is that garage here, this garage, you're gonna come out further or...
We're, we're coming further with one bay, so...
One bay.
So, let me see if I can look at the front. So, here, that's the side of the garage. Down here, we're bringing it out.
Bringing it out closer to the front of the property.
Correct.
I see.
Which is...
So, it's not, it's not gonna, it's not going anywhere further that, out that way?
No.
At least you'd be coming out your driveway, which you need.
Right. So, we're not, we're not...
Eric had to shovel the snow there, too.
Yeah, we're not increasing the nonconformity on the side.
On the side.
Although we're pre-existing nonconforming. So, for the addition, we need a side yard and a front yard. And then as a means of egress from the basement, we have a window well, which, we're talking about a concrete window well, which is ground level, but because it comes even closer, that's an additional variance.
To the front yard.
To the front yard.
This is a 6, this is a 60-foot front yard.
Yes, I mean, when the house was built, it was a 50-foot and now it's 60.
The window well, what you require for the window well is...
It's an additional 5 feet.
It's 4 feet on the side, which is nothing. And then the larger part is 23 feet on the front, but that's only because it's attached to the garage, which is coming out to.
Right, and as Tom explained, because, I mean, if we had a plastic window well, apparently it wouldn't count, but since we're doing it in concrete to look better, it becomes structure.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. Anything else? I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. The application for Hugahali's proposed addition, requiring the 23-foot front yard variance for the addition and a 4-foot side yard variance for the addition, and a 28-foot front yard variance for the window well and a 2-foot side yard variance for the window well should be approved for the following reasons. This is a legally existing nonconforming structure. The framing of the variance will not create undesirable change to character of the neighborhood. Due to the situation of the house and the property, there is no other way to achieve the benefit sought other than to grant this variance. There will be no adverse effect to the physical environment or the conditions. And since it's legally existing nonconforming, I don't consider it self-created. We'll need, I guess, foundations surveys for the window well and for the addition itself prior to framing. And if you can start within 6 months and finish within 1 year, we should grant.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you for your variance.
Next one is gin.
So, the gins have a 1940's Dodge farmhouse and over their garage, actually what started this whole thing, raccoons got in to a vent and were living in the roof, so they'd have to repair the roof. So, they decided as long as they were doing that, why not add a dormer and add more light to the room up above?
Make it more pleasing for the raccoons?
Exactly. Hopefully not. So, because the house is legal, nonconforming in two directions, and even though this dormer doesn't come to the edge in either one, it is also nonconforming.
So, you're really not changing the footprint. You're just adding that dormer.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No.
Does the dormer show up on this survey at all? Do they mark it there?
Yes, it's this.
Okay.
So, here it's in yellow.
Oh, all right.
See, that's how little impacted it is. You can't even find it.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the gin application for two front yard variances, construction of a dormer to make the home more livable, be approved for the following reasons. There will be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The variances are not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And the alleged difficulty is not self-created. You have 6 months to start, 1 year to complete.
Keep the footage of the variance.
There are no, no neighbors in opposition?
He didn't. I think he did.
And, do you need anything?
No.
For these reasons, I think we should grant the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Bondur, homeowner at 82 Shingle House. I was here last month for a different variance.
How are the chickens going?
We don't have them yet. We don't have our variance officially approved yet. We are requesting a front yard variance in order... We are requesting a front yard variance in order to build, it's about a hundred and fifty square foot bump out on our kitchen. Our house is legal nonconforming, so it is already very close to the street. And so where the setback is sixty, we wanna build at forty-five. And a large portion of our house is already closer than forty-five to the street.
And obviously, choosing how you were going to expand is dictated by the current location of the kitchen.
Yes, yes. We're, we planned to gut the kitchen and then bump out that wall so that's even with the wall in the room next to it, because we're gonna combine the two rooms. Yes.
Is that in the works?
We are working on that, yes. And we did have the ARB meeting, and that was approved with just a couple tiny little aesthetic changes.
Let the record show that there's no one here in opposition to the application. I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application of Laura and Jeremy Bondur, eighty-two Shingle House Road, for a front yard variance for the purpose of installing a front corridor addition to their home. The variance required is being made to a legal nonconforming structure that is within the setbacks. The application will require a fifteen-foot front yard variance in a sixty-foot required setback. The variance, the proposed, proposed location of the dormer is forty-five feet. For the following reasons, I move that we approve this application. The applicant has shown that the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. No neighbors have appeared in opposition. No other feasible method is available to the applicant, which is likely to achieve the benefit being sought. The requested variance is not substantial considering the nature of the location of the same and the size of the property. The applicant's difficulty or hardship is not self-created. And for these reasons, I move that we approve the application. You don't need anything, do you?
Foundation survey.
A foundation survey. Foundation survey before starting, and six months to start, a year to complete.
Okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Happy variance.
Next time you come, we want a few eggs now.
I hope I'm done.
Should've done one application, and you only have to pay one application fee. You could've done both.
Kill two birds with one stone.
I know, I was wondering that too.
Well, I suggested some trees alongside the wood deck, only alongside the wood deck, between the deck and the property line, to share the cost with the neighbor. He's thinking about it.
Don't feel compelled to come to a conclusion if you're not ready. I mean, we, you can hold us over until next month if it's necessary. But you tell us what your thinking is. But if you haven't reached a conclusion, you haven't reached a conclusion, so.
I have not reached a conclusion. I just want the board to know that I did call and spoke with Ed Wade this morning from Wade Tree Care to try and get a sense of how much the trees cost, how high they would need to be. You saw me while I was walking in on my phone, because I just tried to call him, because I don't remember. I'm pretty sure he said it was four hundred and fifty dollars a tree. What I don't remember is how many trees he thought would be needed, and I don't remember the height. I wanna say ten feet, but I'm not sure, so that's my hesitancy. But I do wanna just make one comment. One of the board members said, you know, every neighbor sees, I forget the exact, every neighbor sees another, another neighbor. In this instance, I agree with you. I do see their house today. But the variance that they're looking for puts that deck that much closer to my house, and it becomes that much more intrusive. So whether one foot's intrusive, or ten foot's intrusive, or a hundred feet closer's intrusive, I think that's in the eye of the beholder. You know, I'm not really sure where the hardship lies. You know, they are creating it, you know, on me. So again, I'm not necessarily opposed, as I said earlier, opposed to, you guys are gonna do whatever you're gonna do, regardless of what I think. I'm not necessarily opposed to.
We're gonna take into consideration what you think. There's no question about that.
I'm not necessarily opposed to the granting of the variance, but as they get closer to my house, I think it's not unreasonable for me to ask for that added impact on me to be mitigated. I'll look at my phone and see if it responded by text just now. It did not click out. It did not. So if you can carry it over and give me the opportunity to speak with the applicant?
Here's the. I mean, here's the circumstance. I just want you to understand this. So, we can go ahead and consider the application and vote on the application. As I said earlier, I hope you heard me, it would require all three board members to vote in the positive to approve this. If one member were to vote no, then the application would not be approved.
If you waited till our next meeting and held it, which you have the right to, you have the right, because we're not, we're not at full strength, to request that we hold over your application till the next meeting. And if we have all five of us here, then you only need three.
Simple majority.
Five to approve.
Okay.
That's one thing you ought to consider, and the other thing is, I mean, you had the discussions with the neighbor. You know, you have to come to a feeling as to what you think is reasonable for your, for the owner to do or not.
Well, I need to discuss that with the owner too, you know.
Okay, sure. It sounds like it may be something that should be held over anyhow.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so we will hear the application again next month. Make a motion to hold the public hearing.
You'll make a motion, we adjourn this application until our next meeting?
When's the next meeting?
April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth.
Now, if, if you were going to either voluntarily or through some compromise, come to some conclusion as to screening, we would like that to be documented so that there cannot be any further.
Under drawing?
Yes.
Yes, simple drawing. Right. And if you could get that to the secretary before, you know, when it's required. Yep.
The drawing needs to show the location of the screening.
Yes.
And the type of screen that's proposed.
Okay.
If it's trees, the type of tree and the height. If it's some kind of shrubbery, the type of shrubbery, and the height that it will grow to. Whatever you, whatever you decide to do with the neighbor, however, whatever terms you come to, we need to have a drawing showing that.
No problem.
Some documentation so that when we make our motion, we put that into the record, and it's there in perpetuity, and it has to be maintained in that way. So we need a record to establish that.
I just wanna make, make it clear that it's just alongside the deck. Am I right?
No, that's between you and the neighbor. Your, actually, your, your, your client and the neighbor should decide what screening is going to make you both happy. As far as I'm concerned, you don't need screening, but that's none of my business. If you decide you want screening, and you can come to terms with it, and you show us what the screening is, and we all agree with it, or the majority of us agree with it, so be it. So that's, that's the way it has to go.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have to make a motion?
I just made a motion. Now we adjourn this, this application until our next meeting, which is.
I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
See you next month.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I move that the board approve and adopt the meeting minutes for the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're off.